The time is 6:00 PM and the regular meeting of the Denison City Council is now in session. Our invocation this evening will be given by Todd Cato, Pastor of Park Avenue Church of Christ.
Father God, we pause just to contemplate and reflect on your greatness. We are in awe of your creation, the sun, the moon, and the stars, which testify to your majesty and your goodness. Father, we're thankful for the lives that you have given to us. And Father, we are in awe at the beauty and the complexity of the human body and the human soul, and we give you thanks. Father, we're thankful for this community. We're thankful for all that serve us here in this little corner of your creation. Father, thank you for this council, and we pray for your wisdom to come over them as they deliberate the issues of this day. Father, help them to see things clearly and to judge justly. Father, we offer a prayer of comfort and strength for our neighbors in Sherman as they have experienced a tragedy of their own, and we pray for your strength and comfort and peace, especially among those who have been so significantly affected. Father, we are grateful for the community that is rising up to support one another. And Father, we're thankful for this community as we stand behind one another, as we recognize that we are better together. And Father, we pray that as your creation, we will glorify you as we love our neighbor as we love ourselves. Father, thank you for the great love and mercies and compassion and grace that you have showered down upon us. Help our lives to be a reflection of that thankfulness. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Thank you. We are honored this evening to have with us Destiny Bincheck, who is a member of Team Denison. She holds the position of Municipal Court Clerk. And Destiny served the U.S. Navy from 2010 to 2017 as a Nuclear Machinist Mate on the USS Dwight D. Eisenhower. How about that? And the Mid-Atlantic Regional Maintenance Center in Norfolk, Virginia. Destiny is going to lead us in our pledge this evening. And thank you for your service.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor Texas God. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Tonight, we get to honor one of our own, as he is being honored by his peers in North Texas. I would like to read an excerpt from the notification letter. It is with enthusiasm that we inform you that Andrew Means was selected as the award recipient for the Recreation Professional of the Year. The award committee had many wonderful entries to score, and it was a difficult task, but Andrew stood out above the rest to exemplify commitment and dedication in the field of parks and recreation. We are honored to present this award to highlight your commitment to excellence in all that you do in your daily pursuits. From one of his peers, Andrew's leadership, knowledge, and expertise in recreation is a huge advantage for our city. He is a true team player and always fosters positive discussions and brings the best out of others. Andrew embodies essential leadership practices. He is strategic and a selfless leader, which has allowed for best workplace solutions. Andrew, we all agree with this assessment, and we are excited that others see what we see every day. On behalf of myself, the entire council, the city manager, your fellow teammates, congratulations on being named 2021 Recreational Professional of the Year by North Region Texas Recreation and Parks Society. If you will meet me at the podium, I have a presentation. This certificate is proudly presented to Andrew Means for his outstanding contributions in the field of parks and recreation. November 1st, 2021. Signed, Janet Gott, Mayor, and Greg Smith, City Manager. Andrew, we are so excited that others see what we get to see, and we are so glad that you're part of our team, and you certainly deserve this honor.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I appreciate it.
Also, this evening, we would like to recognize our municipal court, and if Judge Banman, our city clerk, Chris Wallantide, our assistant city clerk, Fanchan Sterns, and all of those who support in our municipal court. If you will join me up here, please. Whereas municipal courts play a significant role in preserving public safety and promoting quality of life in Texas, as a matter of fact, more people come in contact with municipal courts than all other Texas courts combined. And public impression of the Texas judicial system is largely dependent upon the public's experience in municipal court. And whereas the City of Denison has hosted the Denison Municipal Court since April 26, 1920, and whereas the Denison Municipal Court is a state court and its judges are members of the state judiciary. While Denison municipal judges are not policymakers for the City of Denison, they are bound by the law and the canons of judicial conduct and are required to make decisions independent of the governing body of the city councils, city officials, and employees. And whereas the Denison Municipal Court is committed to the notion that our legal system is based on the principle that an independent, fair, and competent judiciary will interpret and apply the laws that govern us, and that judges and court personnel should comply with the law and act in a manner that promotes public confidence in the integrity and impartiality of the judiciary. And whereas the municipal courts serve as the local justice center for the enforcement of local ordinances and fine only state offenses that protect the peace and dignity of our community, the municipal judges, prosecutor, and clerks continually strive to improve the administration of justice through participation in judicial education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state and local professional organizations. And whereas the city council recognizes that the constitution and laws of the state of Texas contain procedural safeguards and criminal cases for all defendants, including indigent defendants and supports the Denison Municipal Court in complying with such legal requirements. Now therefore I, Janet Gott, Mayor of the City of Denison, and on behalf of the entire city council, extend appreciation to our Denison municipal judges, prosecutor, city marshals, and court personnel for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to our community by proclaiming the week, November 1st through 5th, 2021, as Municipal Court Week. Signed, Janet Gott, Mayor of Denison, Texas. I want you all to know that we have an amazing municipal court. It runs like clockwork, and that's because of all of these people that are standing up there. So let's give them a little appreciation. Oh, I was going right past public comments, Chris. This time in every meeting is set aside for public comments. If a citizen wishes to speak, it must be on any action item that is listed on the agenda. And in order to speak, you must complete a request to speak card before we reach this point in our agenda. Several of you are here and wishing to speak tonight, so those who are speaking on public meetings, we'll address those when we get there. The others, you're speaking on individual items, but I think for clarity, this night, tonight, we'll allow you to speak at the time that we address that individual item. So, all right. Consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Hander and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 5A, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on a conditional use permit for an indoor amusement without alcohol sales for downtown escape rooms located at 318 West Chestnut Street, case number 2021-13ACUP. Mr. Medina.
Thank you and good evening. Here's the subject property outlined in yellow just behind us here on West Chestnut, and that's just for clarity, that's South Burnett running north to south and South Rusk running north to south. The property is located within the central area zoning district, as with most of our downtown. Our comprehensive plan requires that, or states that, our downtown area should be reserved for more entertainment-type uses. Downtown escape room definitely fits that criteria as being an amusement service where one participates in a series of puzzles or somewhat game and uses their wit and logic to try and solve these interactive puzzles. With that being said, the applicant is here tonight, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request on October 22nd.
Questions for Mr. Medina. This is a public hearing, and there is at least one person here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item. Stephanie Dryden. Stephanie, would you come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please, ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Dryden, 107 South Travis Street, Sherman, Texas, 75090. Welcome and good evening. Thank you so much for taking the time to hear us out tonight. I am the owner, along with my husband, of Downtown Escape Rooms. Downtown Escape Rooms was originally opened in 2017. Mid-2018, they moved to a larger building because it was growing, and then we purchased the business from the original owners last year in 2020, June of 2020. And at the end of the year last year, we continued to grow in spite of some of the unique challenges that the COVID-19 pandemic had given us. But at that point, we were ready to decide some options as far as expansion goes. At that time, we decided that we wanted to open a second location, and we began looking into different options as far as location goes. Denison was a natural choice for us. We have been residents of Denison for the last 12 years. Only recently, this last year, we built a house in Sherman, so we're familiar with the community and involved, and so we sought out a location. We think it is a unique spot, and we have greatly enjoyed our relationship with the downtown owners of various businesses in downtown Sherman. We're just three doors down from Kelly Square, just to give you an idea, and look forward to the opportunity to have that kind of relationship with downtown business owners here in Denison as well. Do you guys have any questions?
Questions for Ms. Dryden? So I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
This will be limited to the bottom floor, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That is all that we have leased from the owners of the building.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item?
I didn't put my name down, but...
But this is a public hearing, so you...
Oh, good.
State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Don Nobler, and I reside at number one Downs Lake Circle, Dallas, Texas, 75230. We leased to Stephanie in Sherman, and she has been nothing but a great, great tenant, has brought a lot of happy people to the city of Sherman, and she'll do the same thing in Denison. She's great. She's a go-getter, and she knows how to organize the escape room and do it very well. So on behalf of Los Hermanos, the owners of the property, we say, "Go get it." Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council? A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve an ordinance issuing a conditional use permit for indoor amusement with alcohol sales for downtown escape rooms located at 318 West Chestnut Street. Second?
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Hander and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Hold on. I believe you made the motion with alcohol, and it is without alcohol.
Ooh, without alcohol.
Thank you.
So noted.
It was a long one, Dave. Sorry.
Okay, so we'll... Now that that has been amended, there is a motion by Mayor Pro...
I was okay with it. I heard it.
She was getting what she didn't even want. There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Hander and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. Now, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 5B, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance rezoning approximately 16 acres from the local retail district to a planned development overlay district for retail and multifamily uses on the east side of US 75 north of Crawford Lane, case number 2021-141BD. Mr. Medina.
Thank you again. Here's the subject property outlined in yellow, north of Crawford Lane, east of US 75, and just for reference, that's B. McDaniel across the street there to the east. So the zoning map looks a little off right now, or just wacky with colors, but just to... The quick of it is, the property is currently zoned local retail and abuts some single-family properties a little bit further out. Our comprehensive plan states that along the US 75 corridor, that's to be engaged in commercial or retail-type uses. The proposed plan development, as outlined in this concept plan, creates multiple tracks. You have Track A on the left side of your screen and Track B on the right side of your screen. This green area that's Track A is your local retail. So in the future, the developer intends to, assuming approval of the zoning ordinance, to subdivide that further into multiple either retail or office or commercial-type tracks to kind of satisfy that comprehensive plan that we have adopted. While Track B is going to be the bulk of Phase 1, that's going to predominantly, or will completely include multifamily apartments as well as townhomes that are adjacent onto South Lilis. Now to clarify, these townhomes are adjacent to South Lilis, but they do not front on the South Lilis. All access from the townhomes are going to be through Viking, which will then allow the residents to access the internal kind of drive lanes and parking. So you won't have any kind of parallel parking on Lilis to interfere with the school traffic. You also won't have any... Yeah, there's no driveways that way either, no access. Even the garbage and refuse will be serviced in the apartment complex grounds. You do see a little tail at the very bottom down there. I know it's difficult to read on your screen, but that's emergency access only. So that's just to allow EMS and fire to get in if they need to, if the primary access is blocked. So to recap, the 16 acres, the applicant's requesting that the 16 acres be rezoned from local retail to planned development overlay district to allow for retail and multifamily uses. Common name of the development is the Rosemary Edition. I'm sorry, I forgot to add that in earlier. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval on October 26th, and you also have a recommendation from us as staff for approval. And note, the applicant is also here tonight.
Questions for Mr. Medina?
So there's going to be some type of screening between Lilis and the townhomes? Because those will be the back of the townhomes, correct?
So they are proposing to utilize like an open, like a wrought iron-type fencing with some landscaping, but these townhomes are a little bit more unique. They're actually, I guess we can call them double fronts, where the front and back of these buildings will actually have front elevations on both sides. They'll look like front facades. So while you're driving down Lilis, it's going to appear that you have a front of a house that's there, so you shouldn't be looking at the back of someone's porch, if that makes sense.
Yes, it does.
There was a picture of the elevation in our packet. Do you have a picture of that?
Oh, no, ma'am. I'm sorry, it's not in the slide.
My pen just came apart. Any further questions? This is a public hearing, and at least two people have asked to speak. Joe Gilbert, would you come forward and say your name and address for the record, please, sir? Mr. Munson, you don't look like Joe Gilbert.
Well, I just wanted to introduce him, if you don't mind.
Okay, okay.
I'm John Munson. I live at 1127 West Morton. Just wanted to tell you that we really have a guy here that I call him the real deal because he is building apartments in Sherman, Van Austin, Oh Hanlon Way. It's all conventional. It's a quality event. I've known him and his family for many years, but at any rate, I've really been so pleased to work with him because he's had... We've had multiple meetings with the city and its planning department well before he made an offer on the track. And there's a lot of... He's already done all this engineering. He's spent... We've reserved the... He's reserved, surveyed the property, new topo, just done beyond what you would expect a normal buyer to do. And what we're seeing up here is a lot of buyers that we don't know, and we don't know if they're going to buy something and sit on it and do nothing. And I'm afraid that's a lot of the transactions in the marketplace. But at any rate, we are real pleased to be here with Joe, and he will answer any of your questions.
Mr. Munson, would you state your name and address for the record, please?
It's John Munson, 1127 West Morton.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Gilbert?
Thank you, John. Yes, ma'am. Joe Gilbert, 801 East Taylor, Sherman, Texas. I'm the developer for the proposed development, and I'm available to answer any questions that the council or anyone else has.
Questions for Mr. Gilbert?
I'm still a little confused as to what the front and the back look to say.
Yes.
So the back along Lilis is going to look like the front? There's not going to be a backyard for any of these townhomes?
That's correct. Traditionally, a duplex would have one unit on one side and one unit on the other side, but these will have one unit on the front and one unit on the back. So they'll have architectural features on both sides with gables and pitchroofs and things of that nature. So they're planned to have a wrought iron fence running about halfway down the duplexes to where people cannot come from Lilis into the apartment community or the townhomes. And they'll have side yards. What they have is about a five-by-seven porch, and we'll fence in a portion for the residents that's probably, you know, 10 by 7, something along those lines, so they have a little side yard.
Joe, will the residents... So if you're going to have them back-to-back, will residents actually access the front of their unit? I mean, will they... They'll obviously see where they're going to park, right? They're going to park inside the complex, but then they will... Will there be a sidewalk running along that'll allow them to access that down the side? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes.
Two separate front doors, right?
Correct. So our first conceptual site plan that we submitted to the city did not have any type of access off of Lilis Lane at all. It was all enclosed within the wrought iron fence. But our feedback from the city staff said they thought it would look better, and I agree. If the wrought iron fence was not fully enclosing those duplexes, we are going for more of a residential look to conform to the neighborhood and the folks across the street and that drive up and down Lilis. So with that being said, there will be a new sidewalk built all the way down Lilis and then all the way along Viking Street. And in our staff review letter we received from the city, they would like us to attach the front units to Lilis Lanes with a sidewalk as well.
How do we control the parking along Lilis Lane? Is that a concern?
It was our intention not to have any parking whatsoever on Lilis Lane, but based on the staff comments and how they'd like for the fence to appear, I'm not so sure if Lilis Lane will allow parking or if the city will allow parking on Lilis Lane or not. We'd prefer there not be.
That would be a staff question.
Yeah, so right now, there'll be no access into the development from that street.
Even foot traffic?
No, they will have no foot traffic.
That's correct.
It's totally fenced in, so there'll be no parking and access point going in from that street. So that should eliminate the concern of parking on the street by itself, and then we have the right to regulate parking on that street by ordinance as well.
I guess, Mr. Gilbert, I'm still concerned with the back unit with barbecue grills, bicycles, lawn furniture, the appearance that will have from Lilis. I'm still concerned about that.
So the units themselves have side yards, not backyards, so that maybe can alleviate that concern somewhat. And we would also be open to any type of live screening that city staff suggested to try to keep that from being an eyesore. Along with those duplexes themselves will be controlled by the property management on staff, and so we can put policies in place through our management and our clubhouse. If someone is not following those rules and they have something stored on their patio, they can be subject to breaching their lease with us. And so we can do our best to enforce that those don't get junked up, and we can also do things in advance like live screening on the wrought iron and whatever else staff may suggest.
Yeah, the fact that they won't be single-family owned...
I understand, but still, people have barbecue...
Oh, I understand. The... Joe, one other question. One thing we ran into on another development we were looking at was the location. And I don't believe your planned development addressed this, but the location of the electric meters. We recently ran into a project where they were actually located on the front of the duplexes that were built, you know, in between the garages. Now, obviously, you're not going to have that set up here, but would those be... Would those utility access be located on the side of those structures there along Lilis, or would they be... Have you thought that got that far in the design?
No, but that's a very good point, and I would think that we would have an advantage to be able to put those meters on the side or on the back because of all the other electricity that ran through the multifamily side.
I just mentioned it now because it was one of those things, you don't notice it until you notice it, and then it's like, oh, my gosh, look at this, you know?
Yeah, that's a pet peeve of mine as well. I see, you know, a brand-new duplex built, and they put the meter in the cheapest possible location, right in between the driveways, right on the front of the house.
Yes, sir.
So I completely understand.
Perfect, yeah.
Any further questions from council? Thank you, Mr. Gilbert.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Before... Discussion from council? Before we call for a motion... Before we call for a motion, uh, Councilmember Crowley needs to recuse himself and leave the dais. A motion from council.
Mayor, I move to approve the subject property being rezoned to a planned development overlay district for retail and multifamily uses.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Hander and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Um, will you ask Councilmember Spiegel to return to the dais?
Crowley.
I mean, Crowley. Yeah, you didn't leave, Councilmember Spiegel. I noticed you're still there. Let the record reflect that Councilmember Crowley has returned to the dais. Item six A, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on awarding a bid and entering into a contract with Pittard Construction in the amount of two million nine hundred and fifty-six thousand nine hundred and twenty-one dollars and ten cents for the construction of the FM six ninety-one and FM fourteen seventeen water line phase two, and authorize the city manager to execute the same. Ms. Jones?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm excited to bring forward the award of two projects. So in the climate of today with materials being harder to find and these projects being location similar and, um, same size pipeline, we decided as staff to combine these into two proj, into one project, and we bid this out as a base bid for the FM six ninety-one water line and an alternate bid is the fourteen seventeen phase two water line. On the fort, on the FM six ninety-one water line, that's the new water line from Driggs Road over to Preston Road, which will feed the new water tower there at the college that we're under design on right now. And that will also enable, um, the growth along Preston Road as there will have water access there as well. Um, the six, the FM fourteen seventeen water line phase two will be a continuation of the twelve-inch water line that'll go north on fourteen seventeen from the Caterpillar plant up to, um, FM nine ninety-six. And so that will replace the ten-inch AC pipe that is in the ground right now, which, um, has, it'll help increase the capacity there and the pressure there. And so we bid those out, and on Wednesday, October twentieth, twenty twenty-one, we opened the bids publicly and, and read them out loud. Lynn Vessels Construction was the lowest on the base bid at one million four hundred and eighty-six thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents. The lowest alternate bid was Pittard Construction at one million four hundred and seventy thousand forty-five dollars and ten cents, with the total, the lowest total base bid with Pittard Construction at two million nine hundred and fifty-six thousand nine hundred and twenty-one dollars and ten cents. The base bid price was about six hundred dollars apart, which is the first time we've ever had one that close. Um, but we did, staff did recommend the approval of the award for both of those projects for Pittard Construction. These are both, um, planned in the five-year CIP, so currently, we have funding available right now for the FM six ninety-one line, and the remaining money will be, um, part of the twenty-two CIP plan, and the for, phase two fourteen seventeen line is a part of the, um, twenty-two CIP project list as well. I will be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Ms. Jones? Discussion from council? A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the bid award and entering into a contract with Pittard Construction in the amount of two million nine hundred and fifty-six thousand nine hundred and twenty-one dollars and ten cents for the construction of the FM six ninety-one water line and the FM fourteen seventeen phase two water line, and authorize the city manager to execute the same.
Second.
There is a motion by Councilmember Spiegel and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Hander. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Item six B, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on awarding the bid to Archer Western Construction LLC for the Paw Paw Water, wastewater treatment plant headworks and miscellaneous clarifier improvements project in the amount of two million eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents. Ms. Jones?
Good evening again. So this, um, if you recall, last year, we brought to, brought forward some emergency funding that was needed for the wastewater plant due to some structural issues on our secondary clarifier, and so we have, um, completed our full evaluation for the structural, um, integrity of that secondary clarifier and have finalized all of the engineering. So this is, um, almost a phase one, you can call, of our wastewater plant master plan that you'll be seeing here in the next few months, hopefully. And so this one, um, it will repair the headworks, which, um, you can see here that it, this is the headworks where all of the flow comes into the wastewater plant, and we have experienced some severe corrosion on the concrete, and so this project will rehab that area and rebuild the headworks to where it doesn't have all of the corrosion issues that it has right now. And also, we will be, um, taking off the, currently, the splitter box is attached to the secondary clarifier, and so we will be removing the, the splitter box and making it its, a standalone splitter box, which has also created some bulging in the secondary clarifier. So the picture on the right that you see, you can, you can kind of see that's looking down into the empty clarifier, that there's a few bulges on the wall, which has made that, uh, clarifier structurally unsound. And so we do need to, to move forward in moving that, um, that splitter box out and repairing the secondary clarifier until we can replace these secondary clarifier. So on October sixth, twenty twenty-one, we received five bids for this project, and Archer Western Construction came in at the lowest bid of two million eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand three hundred and seventy fi, five dollars. There was a, um, bid at the time that was lower at two million seven hundred and thirty-five thousand four hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighty-nine cents by Udelhoven. However, after the engineers looked over their bid, bid proposals, there were a few math errors in there, and so that disqualified them as the lowest bidder, which made their bid about seven million, seven point two million. So the, uh, the lowest bid after the evaluation of the bid proposals was Archer Western Construction. Staff recommends approval of the project, and this is also a funded project in the CIP as well.
Questions for Ms. Jones? Discussion from council? A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the, the award of the bid to Archer Western Construction LLC for the Paw Paw wastewater treatment plant headworks and miscellaneous clarifier improvements project in the amount of two million eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars, and, uh, approve the city manager execute all necessary documents.
Second.
There is a motion by Councilmember Crowley and a second by Councilmember Doty. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Item six C, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on an agreement with Teague Knoll and Perkins for right-of-way services for the Duck Creek Interceptor in the amount of fifty-four thousand dollars, and authorize the city manager to execute the same. Ms. Jones, this is the Kerry show, huh?
It is for now, and I'll turn it over to Bill here shortly, so. Um, so this is for a right-of-way acquisition contract with Teague Knoll Perkins for the new Duck Creek Interceptor. So we are under design right now with Plummer to design this new, uh, this new sewer line, which will be increased from size from twenty-one inches to thirty or thirty-six inch sewer line. So part of the Teague Knoll Perkins contract is that they will do up to ten properties. Um, they, they base it on parcels and property owners, so we kind of estimate it outside of the core, which the, our plumber, the plumber, um, engineering will handle the, any conversations that have to go on with the core as they deal with the core more often, so it's easier for them to have those conversations. So Teague Knoll Perkins will, um, negotiate with ten property owners that will cover the rest of, the rest of the line. And so this is just for right-of-way and easement services. We are in the middle of surveying right now. We expect the surveying to be done within two weeks, and so we do anticipate the right-of-way acquisition may start in the next, um, next few months. On the map, you'll see that the green line is our current alignment, and the red line is our current proposed alignment. Once survey is done, the engineers will take a look at that alignment, but we are proposing for it to stay relatively similar to what it is now. Um, but I'm happy to answer any questions. Oh, this, this agreement is in the amount of fifty-four thousand dollars.
Questions for Ms. Jones? Discussion from council? A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the agreement with Teague Knoll and Perkins for right-of-way services for the Duck Creek Interceptor in the amount of fifty-four thousand dollars, and authorize the city manager to execute the same.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Hander and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Item six D, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on approving the purchase of four pieces of Public Works related equipment, including a mini excavator in the amount of sixty-five thousand, a backhoe in the amount of one four, one hundred and forty-five thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars, an excavator in the amount of one hundred and twenty-nine thousand three hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-four cents, and a track loader in the amount of seventy-one thousand six hundred and seventy-six dollars and ninety-one cents, and authorize the city manager to execute all related documents. Ms. Jones?
All right. So these pieces of equipment will be used in various divisions within Public Works. Um, these were all approved in the budget process, so this is just finalizing the, the orders and making sure that we have your authorization to move forward with, with those purchases. So the mini excavator is for our streets division in the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars, and that will be to United Ag and Turf. And, um, our, our staff has specked that out, and they have test, tested out the piece of equipment, and so that, that will help them when they get into tight spots for grading purposes, drain adjustments, um, anything like that. And so that's what they plan to use that piece of equipment for. The backhoe for the utilities division is the total of one hundred and forty-five thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars, and that will be to Holt Cat, and that will be to replace a backhoe that has about fifteen hundred hours on it already. Uh, it's not, not in the best of shape, it probably spends more time in the shop than it does on the streets, so, um, that one will need to be replaced. The excavator is also for the utilities division in the amount of one hundred and twenty-nine thousand three hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-four cents, and that will be utilized by the fourth crew that was approved in the budget process, and so as soon as we have staff to fund, to fill those positions, this, this excavator will be their piece of equipment that they utilize on a day-to-day basis. The last piece of equipment is the track loader for the wastewater division at seventy-one thousand six hundred and seventy-six dollars and ninety-one cents to Bobcat of North Texas. This is to replace a tractor that they currently have that does not stand up to the workload that they have. They have special deliveries that have to be unloaded from an eighteen-wheeler that, um, the, the tractor does right now, but it may not be the safest option for them. Um, it'll also enable them to not rent as much equipment because this piece of equipment will have different attachments that will allow them to do their job more efficiently. So with that, those are the four pieces of equipment, um, that we have ready for your approval. We'll have one more hopefully here shortly.
Questions for Ms. Jones? Discussion from council? A motion?
Mayor? Mayor, I move to approve the purchase of four pieces of Public Works related equipment, including a mini excavator in the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars, a backhoe in the amount of one hundred and forty-five thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars, an excavator in the amount of one hundred and twenty-nine thousand three hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-four cents, and a track loader in the amount of sixty-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars, and authorize the city manager to execute any related documents.
Second.
Okay, hold on just a second. The last one you said was sixty-nine thousand? But, but this is showing seventy-one six seventy-six, so, so which is correct, Kerry?
It'll be seventy-one thousand six hundred and seventy-six ninety-one.
I'll amend it, but note, I didn't make the mistake this time. This was most of it. So I'll amend my motion for the track loader, uh, to be in the amount of seventy-one thousand six hundred and seventy-six dollars and ninety-one cents.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Hander and a second by Councilmember Crowley. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Item six E, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on a request to paint the facade and trim of the structure located at three sixteen West Chestnut Street, case number twenty twenty-one dash zero five zero eight. Mr. Medina?
Thank you. So here's the subject property outlined in blue. This is adjacent to our parking lot behind us here to the south. That's West Chestnut running east to west, uh, and for reference, in between Rusk and Burnett. This is the old overhead door. Here are the proposed color, yeah, colors. The applicant's requesting to utilize blue kiss. While it has a name of blue kiss, it's more of like a whitish grayish color, has a primary facade color here. Um, actually, I think, uh, here it goes, here's a better example, where you can kind of see where the applicant's wanting to utilize blue kiss. That would be on all the garage doors, and then utilize Egyptian blue on the green metal trim that is existing today. The historic preservation board recommended approval on October nineteenth, and the applicant's requesting to utilize blue kiss and Egyptian blue on the fac, on the exterior of the, of the building at, um, three sixteen West Chestnut.
Questions for Mr. Medina? Jermaine Mundine has requested to speak on behalf of this agenda item. Jermaine, you want to come forward and state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Jermaine Mundine at property three sixteen West Chestnut, um, in Dennis, Texas. If y'all have any questions for me, uh, you can ask Mr. Medina, kinda summed it all up pretty well there.
I do have a question.
Okay.
What made you choose Egyptian blue? Because it sure does not look like that, the color that's in our packet. It does not look like that color when it's painted on a building. It is bright and glow in the dark.
Yes, ma'am. Um, so the reason that we picked it is because it was the closest color that matched our, uh, blue of our business color, so, I mean, ours is a little more royal blue, but we got the packet of, of pre-approved colors, and we kind of went by with swatches and color mashed them, and that was the closest one, so we just kind of went with that one.
Well, what may look good on a loco does not necessarily look good on a building.
Yes, ma'am.
As, as we have found, uh, recently. You know, my, my issue with this is you are using, you are requesting the Egyptian blue for the, for the trim. Unfortunately, on this building, the trim is ninety percent of the building. Uh, you know, most of what you're gonna have is, uh, is the Egyptian blue, and, um, so I can't, I can't tell from this picture, i- is this supposed to reflect what it's gonna look like? Or is this the old, is this the green?
Yes, ma'am, that's currently the green, so we just, uh, it's a color elevation sheet to show you kind of what color is gonna go where. Um, we didn't have the technology to kind of switch them to the exact color. Um, but yes, the garage doors will basically be white, and then the trim, like you said, will be the bluish color. But we also submitted another color of, like a grayish color, um, that, you know, I mean, that, we weren't just too picky on the blue, we just kind of picked that one because that's kind of what matched, and it was pre-approved. Um, we're not dead set on that one by any means.
Well, the, the blue ki, the blue kiss, just looking at it, it does not appear to be that bright and blue, but have you driven down Austin Avenue and looked up at that blue wall, uh, on, on the corner of Main and, and Austin?
Oh, yes, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
It glows in the dark. Is that really the color you want on your building?
Um, like I said, I mean, we didn't have no particular, we gotta have this one, but it was just the closest one to it, and we just figured we'd go with it. Um, that's why I was saying it, we're not dead set on it. If, if there's another color, we have no problem working with y'all in any way to, um, choo, select a different color.
Have you, have you looked at any other possibilities?
Yes, ma'am, we did look at, uh, um, I believe it was a Northern Sky Blue, um, was a grayish color that we used for our logo, um, and it wasn't, it was one of the pre-approved colors as well, um, that we had selected, that we, we could also use that. It's more of a grayish. Um, it, it's, it's kind of like, um, the blue kiss, it's really a white, but the Northern Sky Blue is like a gray. Um, and so it was also a pre, pre-approved color as well.
One of, one of the disadvantages of the council is that when these come before the council, we can't see what the building's gonna look like.
Yes, ma'am.
And we can only go by the experience that we've had thus far with Egyptian blue. This is the Northern Sky? Well, that would be...
While they're looking that over, I do want to thank you for, for locating your business downtown. I think it's gonna be really, really cool to have that sports training facility downtown and, uh, a really good use of that building.
I appreciate it.
Absolutely, and, and, uh... Absolutely, and, and this is not about not one of you there.
Oh, absolutely, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
We want you there. We just don't want your building to glow in the dark.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
So you're saying that the Northern Sky, you would use that instead of the Egyptian?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Okay. And what, and then, then you would continue to use the, the Kiss Blue, or Blue Kiss, I guess it is? I'm dyslexic, I guess, I reverse it. The, the Blue Kiss, you would continue to, to use that on the masonry?
Yes, ma'am, yeah, we'd use that on all the garage doors.
And your Northern Sky Blue would still be on, as part of your logo, and the Kiss Blue on your doors?
Yes, ma'am.
So basically, we would just use Northern Sky Blue in place of the Egyptian Blue?
Yes, ma'am.
And you'd be happy with that?
Yeah, that's not a problem at all for us. It's not a problem at all for us.
Well, I think you'd be a whole lot happier with your building, and I think your neighbors would be.
Okay, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
I'm pretty sure.
Okay, okay, I'm with you, I'm with trust.
All right.
Are the landlords okay with it?
Yeah. We love him, eh? He's a product of Denison, Texas.
Yes, he is, and he...
He would be proud and happy with it.
And he is a fine young man, sir.
Thank you for the kind words. Thank you, thank you.
All right, well, we've reserved the right to come back and ask you a question, Jermaine, but in the meantime, Charlie Shearer has indicated that he wishes to speak to this agenda item.
Not this one, Mayor.
Well, it says six E.
I put the wrong one in.
Well, Charlie?
I'm dyslexic, too.
Do you think I can read your mind? Okay, all right.
No, I won't.
Me too, Charlie.
I'll be leaving town tonight.
All right, Amber Holly has also indicated, okay, Amber does not wish to speak. Okay, so, so the, 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 using Northern, Northern Sky Blue in the place of Egyptian Blue would be okay, right, Amber?
Uh, yeah, I'm all ears.
Okay, all right, does council have any other questions for Mr. Mundine?
Since he's been so gracious to entertain us, and I don't want to open up a, a can of worms, but on your sign, on your valuable time sign, is there any way we could maybe meet him halfway and allow him to use his corporate colors on that logo, since he's, because right now it's gonna be black. I mean, if you don't want it to, you don't have, I'm just saying, if that would do better for your business, you think?
Yeah, I mean, a little blue wouldn't hurt, but at the same time, if, if it's gonna look terrible on my building and glow too much, yeah, it won't, it won't kill us by any means, but if y'all would allow us to, that would be great, if that would be better for y'all.
Which is the logo above those two left garage doors?
Yes, it's just, just the two left doors.
Which is the black color that's on our Historic District list.
It looks more along the lines of on my shirt with a little blue in it, not so much as black and white, what you see on the picture. So, yeah, us using Egyptian blue on just the valuable time part wouldn't be, I mean, that'd be great, you know, but if we need to keep it black and white and gray, that's fine, too.
Okay, so, Mayor Pro Tim, where are you suggesting that that, you're suggesting Egyptian blue where?
Well, I wasn't even necessarily suggesting Egyptian blue as much as, as, as literally the color of their, their logo like Mr. Mundine has on his shirt. For their logo, or is that not?
We do not need to be discussing the sign. The sign is not on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
It is just the building colors, so for clarity, let's stay away from the sign. We'll address that at a later date.
Sorry about that.
Well, the colors are showing on the sign?
That the sign permit is not part of the agenda item.
Okay, then.
We can...
Don't you ask any more questions?
I won't, I will not. I'm, I'm on a roll today, I'm sorry, guys.
It's okay, I'm just trying to keep you all on task.
No, thank you, but, we'll talk about it later. But I, I do appreciate you working so well with us on your colors of your building.
Thank you, I appreciate y'all as well.
Thank you, Jermaine.
Any more questions?
We, as Mayor Pro Tim Hender said, we appreciate you working with us, we appreciate you, we appreciate your business in Denison, we appreciate you coming home and being part of our community, so. Any further questions? Then, a motion?
Close.
It's not a public hearing. It's an individual item.
Okay, I'm gonna try my best at this one, here we go. Mayor, I move to approve the use of blue kiss, seven, zero, zero, four dash one, one, and Northern Sky, it looks like five, zero, zero, what is it called?
Northern Sky Blue.
Northern Sky Blue, okay, and that's five, zero, zero, one dash three B on the facade and trim at three sixteen West Chestnut Street, subject to the finish being matte or semi-gloss.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Hender and a second by Councilmember Doty. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item six F, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on a request to paint the facade at four thirty West Chestnut Street, case number twenty-twenty-one dash five, fifty-eight H. Mr. Medina?
Thank you. Here's the subject property outlined in yellow. For reference, this is the old City Hall Annex, the corner of West Chestnut and South Vannan. Here's the front of the subject property on Chestnut, and again, standing on Chestnut, looking at the building kind of to the east of the structure. The applicant is proposing to utilize this color scheme in front of you, as outlined in your packet and in the, on the slides on screen, and all the colors are outlined in your packet as well, to include Egyptian blue, Fiesta Blue, Golden Spell, Veranda Ivory, and Sea Serenade. At the October nineteenth Historic Preservation Board meeting, the Historic Preservation Board tabled this request here with these colors and this color scheme, asking the applicant to come back with alternative colors and give them more options to kind of look over and make a more holistic and thoughtful recommendation. Also, here was the sign that they were proposing as well, and I would like to point out that while my next slides show alternatives that the applicant did submit, which were recommended to be approved by the Historic Preservation Board, the applicant's primary color choice is still this color scheme here with Egyptian blue. The alternative color palette is shown on screen, which includes dark iris as the metal trim for the roof, and splendid blue, which is a lighter shade of blue, on the primary facade. In your packet, you'll also notice, you know, I tried to keep, organize this as well as I could, but there were quite a few colors here, but I did provide you with Exhibits C, D, and E. Those are all colors that were recommended by the Historic Preservation Board. Again, those are the alternative colors. Here are the primary proposed colors that the applicant, this is their number one choice, which is Egyptian blue, Fiesta Blue, Sea Serenade, Veranda Ivory, and Golden Spell. Here are the alternative colors, Splendid Blue, Dark Iris, and Sunday Brunch. So to recap, the Historic Preservation Board initially tabled the request, the applicant submitted the alternative colors, and the Historic Preservation Board acted on the item on October twenty-six with a recommendation of approval at a special meeting, and that is, they recommended approval of the alternative colors. And with that, you have a recommendation of approval by city staff, and the applicant is also here for any questions you might have.
Questions for Mr. Medina? All right. Amy Jordan, would you come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please?
Amy Jordan, fifteen Circle Drive, Denison, Texas. I'm here to answer any questions. I know there's been a lot of controversy over Egyptian blue. I'll start by saying that when we purchased this property recently, with the intentions of moving our current location, which is four twenty West Main, and moving to four thirty West Chestnut, we did drive up and down Main Street to look at buildings and to see what we thought would be eye-catching and would pop in the community and on our streets. We found other blue buildings. Our title of our company is Bella Fontana, which stands for Beautiful Fountain, so we thought a water theme would be ideal for this space. It's currently an orange, uh, sand color, and so the idea was to pick a color that would stand out a little and that would make a statement in the older building that we're trying to renovate and give a new life to and a new purpose. Finding other blue buildings on Main Street, one across from the bank at the end, there was one down here, the Monsters on Main, we just saw these blue buildings and thought they looked really pretty. Picked the color, Egyptian blue, based off of the list that we were told to pick from, looked at swatches and Donna Dow's office, and we picked Egyptian blue. I have seen the recent blue building that we're all, that we're all talking about, I have pictures on my phone of it, and we've talked a lot about that. We do agree that it is bright, we've had conversations about that, so we did propose alternative colors. The one that I, I would like to, to kind of stand firm on is the, I think it's called Golden Spell, that is the yellow that's in our logo, and we've had that logo on Main Street for three and a half years at four twenty, and I really would like to not change our branding. We moved to Denison from Sherman and had a Sherman location for years, and we feel confident that our branding needs to stay the same, so there's not a confusion of ownership change, since the move from Sherman to Denison was an ownership change. So, we presented alternative colors for the building, but I would, I would like to stand strong that we can keep our original gold, which is, to be honest, the Yellow Jacket Gold, because the logo was designed by a Denison employee, so it, it is the Denison Yellow Jacket Gold that we picked, but I couldn't find anything on the approved list that was close, so that's the closest color was that one.
So, Amy?
Yes, ma'am.
That's, that color is, is on your Bella Fontana?
The gold, yeah, the yellow, yeah, and that, that's not painted on the wall, that's an actual sign.
Yes, yes.
That will be dimensional and...
It will stand, it will be three-dimensional.
Yes, ma'am. I know the picture is hard to tell, but that, that will definitely be a, a dimensional sign.
We don't have any pictures with that color. Can you go back, Bill, to, to the other, other picture that shows that, that color? Okay, so, so it's go, whoa.
The Golden Spell, can you go to the, that's, that's the color that's the closest to, now, you know, paint colors and design on a computer for logos is hard to match, but that's the closest that we could find in the paint list compared to a graphic design program.
So have you used that at all on your graphic design to see what's...
That is the, that is the col, it's as closest, yes.
Oh, that is, that's showing on the building?
That's what's on our building right now.
Your alternate choice?
No, the alternate choice, I think, is Sunday Brunch. It's a duller yellow, as you can tell. That's on the approved list. The, the other one is not on the approved list.
Oh, the other one is not?
Correct, correct, but it has been on Main Street for three and a half years on a building, down the street.
I seem to be the only one talking here, so surely somebody else has got an opinion.
Well, I'd like to hear Charlie's comments, too, because I know Charlie's been working on this as well.
Okay, well, we'll hear Charlie.
Yeah, maybe it's a combination.
Okay.
Because it's okay.
Any, any more questions for Ms. Jordan? Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
But we've reserved the right to come back with questions.
Excellent.
Okay. Now, Charlie Shearer, will you come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please, sir?
I'll leave you to tell me what I'm thinking. Charlie Shearer, nine fifteen Waterloo Lake Drive. I think I've made it clear, several of you, where I stand on this, and I will go ahead and say, and I've told Amy this, I'm not a fan of Egyptian blue. I think the massing on this building, personally, would look much better with a lighter color. I think that Amy has followed the protocol, and she's followed our rules and our regulations, and she's gone through the process correctly, and so, you know, I think where I'm coming from is if it's on an approved list and we're telling them no, I have a little bit of problem with that. If, if we don't like the color, let's get it off the list, that's, that's my...
We're working on it, Charlie.
Yeah, so, but we're caught in the middle here in a situation to where we haven't gotten it off yet, but yet we have people who are still picking this color, so it, we're kind of in a catch-22, in my opinion. Amy and I have, we sat down and we had a conversation, pretty lengthy conversation, after the board, the Historic Preservation Meeting, and we talked about the colors, and I think she has chosen an alternative, and it's kind of funny, I was looking at this, this screen, and then I looked at this screen, and if you look at the color swatches, this one's more clear and has more clarity than this one does, so it, there's the problem, is when you see a paint swatch, you don't know what you're actually looking at, and I would hope that the painters could get it to where it doesn't have all of the darker blue, lighter blue stuff in there, I would, hopefully it would be a monochromatic color, but I think she's okay changing to a lighter color, and then the darker color trim. It's not my favorite, but the point lies in it's not my building, you know, and we've got a developer who is spending a large sum of money to take a piece of property and renovate it, turn it into something that we're gonna be proud of. I was instrumental in, in pulling Amy and them to come out of Sherman and come to Denison, and there were a lot of other folks that worked diligently to find them a place on Main Street where they could, where they could open up. They've been good, they've been good neighbors and, and a good business for the city. I just think that in this particular case, I think she's willing to make some concessions as far as the color of the blue. I think that I would, if I were sitting in your position, that would be one of the things that I would take into consideration in my decision, is that she's willing to concede on some things, so maybe we need to concede on some things, since we're trying to pull a color away from her that is still on our approved list. And I, that's where I'm hung up on this thing, is it, you know, she's picked a color that it's there, and, yeah, I, I, that building down there, every time I turn on Main Street, it just, it goes all over me. Doesn't make me as mad as it does Tony Kye, but it, it, it goes all, so...
Or me.
I know where everybody's coming from on this, but I think we've just got a, I don't know, that it's a legal issue, but it's certainly a, you know, a written issue here that we, that we're trying to deal with. I think the yellow, difference between the two yellows, to me, we're gagging at a gnat at that point in time, I don't see that as a big deal for the signage, it doesn't cover that much area, and it's, I don't think that's, I don't think that's, the signage, to me, is not the issue here, it's just the color that we're gonna choose for the, the body of the building. But that's where I stand, I'll be happy to answer any questions council might have.
Questions for Mr. Shearer?
Well, you know, I do, Charlie, I agree with your point in that, you know, we have this broad color palette that we said are quote-unquote allowed. I think you're in agreement, though, that there needs to be, you know, accent colors, there needs to be wall colors, there needs to be primaries...
Absolutely.
...masonry requirements. You know, the fact that, that we're kind of stuck in between doesn't mean that we have to necessarily, and not, nothing against Mrs. Jordan or, or color choosing selection, but it doesn't necessarily mean that we have to live with a blue building on Chestnut Street, right? And so, you know, that's my pain point, I have no, I mean, the sign is beautiful, the color's fantastic, you know, just like we pointed out with Mr. Mundine, you know, we want you to build and utilize your logo, you know, it's not sugarland, Texas, right? Not everybody has to be, it doesn't have, everything doesn't have to be the same color. But, a, you know, if you look at historically, yes, there are some colorful buildings on Main Street, yes, there are some beautiful colorful buildings on Main Street, but at the same time, this is not necessarily that building, or one of those examples, and so, you know, is there an opposition to something kind of like we did with the other building that was on the agenda prior, with more of a grayish tone? other building that was on the agenda prior with more of a grayish tone, a stone tone, a tan tone, you know, something that would be, something less standoutish and then maybe still some accent color? I don't know if y'all talked about that in, in the design conversation.
What we talked about at length was, we talked about that the body color of the building needed to be a lighter shade of color. I mean, if she still wants to go with blue, she likes blue. Um, you know, we have a sign on Main Street and it just so happened that they like purple, you know? Doubt very seriously we're going to find purple in a historic color wheel. You know, the truth of the matter is, if you research historical colors, you're not going to find that many of them, you know, just a handful. And, uh, so, um, I totally get where you're coming from and I, and I, and I think it's, you have the decision power, you can make the decision, that's, that's what you're sitting in the chair to do. I, I totally get that. But where I'm hung up on it, Chris, is you're making a decision that is a personal opinion of that particular color that she chose that was on the list of approved colors.
Sure.
That's kind of where I'm hung up on this.
Yeah.
And I, I'm, I've struggled with it. I can't get past it. I'll just be honest with you, I can't get past it because, you know, um, yeah, it needs to come off the, the list. And it needs to come off quick, apparently, because everybody's wanting to paint the building that color. So, somebody likes it. So, you know, I, I don't know. I don't know. That's, that's where you guys have to make the vote, not me, on this one. So-
Well, Charlie, what may be appropriate on one building is not necessarily appropriate-
I agree, 100%.
I mean, we pointed out the building across from the bank, but it also has a trim, it has windows.
Mm-hmm.
It breaks up that color. It does not have this long wall with nothing in it, uh, that has this, this bright color.
You're right.
And I think that's, that's where, where the discussion has to go. Is the color appropriate for this building? And, um, I'm just telling you-
Personally, I don't, I don't think the Egyptian blue was an appropriate color or is an appropriate color. I don't. Um, so there, I've said it. I don't think it is appropriate. And after, Amy and I spent some time talking about it, I don't think she's necessarily agreed with that, with it being appropriate either. I think she's, she's in agreement now, let's go with the alternative, which is another color that we chose off of a list and, um, that, that is a lighter color. Um, and, you know, go that route.
Any further questions?
Can I talk to the side of the-
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, just real quick. Um, when you, I want to address real quick. You asked about lighter colors like tan and stone and stuff.
Yeah, neutral, more neutral.
Yeah, so I want to talk about originally why, other than the name of our company is a water reference, but if you look at that building, um, and you can see it in this image right here very clearly, you can see dark stripes that run down the building. And if you look at that building the way it is right now, it has black staining that runs down the building. That staining is always going to be, because it's coming from the metal roofing piece that is screwed into the walls and it's years and years of tar being dumped into the ceiling to seal it from leaking. And that tar is going to always run down the wall like that and I think that makes that building look extremely unattractive. So, when looking at painting it a light gray or a tan or, it was always going to have black stripes running down it, because I can't take that metal off because of city ordinance. There's a code that says, "I have to keep that metal there." And to keep the metal there, I have to keep patching the roof because it will never not leak. I've been told that by seven roofers. Seven roofers said, "Congratulations, you bought a building that will always leak." So, until you take that metal off. But I've been told I'm not allowed to take the metal off. All I can do is keep patching.
That has to do with the HVAC screening requirement.
That's the screening, yeah, yes.
But there, maybe there's work around all that.
The coping is where the problem is. That's where the, that's where the, the tar and everything that they put up there to try to patch the roof at some point in time. It's underneath the coping around the edge of the, of the building, of the top of the wall. Um, the, the building has numerous leaks that are being caused by the, the screening, screening wall, but, um, yeah, that's, that's, that's where the, that's where the tar is coming down. When it gets hot in the summertime, it just, it just kind of oozes out underneath the coping and comes down the wall. And, you know, eventually coping will get replaced at some point in time when they re-roof the building. The coping will get, will get redone, because they'll go back with a, a different roof system. But for right now, you know, and, and I told her the other day, I'm going to lobby for tr- for painting that coping a darker color, so that we have a trim across the top of the building to, to terminate the wall at the top. And, um, so, yeah, that's, if you look at the wall, and you've seen it, Chris, you've seen the, you've seen the stains on it.
And as far as that long wall, um, those of you that know me, I'm obviously a huge supporter of the arts, uh, in our community and I think it's extremely important. And I think, as a, a person who lives here for 20 years now, one of the most unique and amazing things about our community is that we have art on our walls and we have dumpsters that we've painted. I wish they'd paint the one behind my spa. Um, but we have beautiful artwork all over our city and I think that makes us unique and I think it is an attraction that makes people come to Dennison. How many times have we looked online and we see pictures of people standing with the butterfly wings, right? So, my long-term goal is to paint that long wall of no windows. Uh, I would love to have a mural there. And, and the truth is, I just can't afford that right now, uh, as I'm trying to renovate and, and have this building turned over as quickly as possible. So, my long-term goal is it's not a giant blue wall. My long-term goal is that we can work together and I can put a mural there that serves as a attraction in our town and feeds with the theme that we've been running around, doing on the sides of building in our town. Um, I, I know it would be awesome if I could do it immediately. I just, I'm having to prioritize where funding is going right now. But I, my goal is not to have a giant blue wall for, for, that's not the long-term goal here.
Well, let me just say, Amy, we're glad you chose Dennison. We're glad you're here. And, uh, and the only, the only thing this council is trying to do is to, to allow something that you're going to be proud of and the community's going to be proud of-
Of course.
-when it's done. But that, you know, it isn't about personal preference. It's about what's going to fit into our community and, um, and we want you here for a long, long time, so.
And just to add, uh, this, we're, we're still in the preliminary, we've got to get with the bill because the actual, you see the shrubbery that's going across the front of the building there. Um, we're wanting to, to landscape that area. Problem is that, that landscape area belongs to y'all. So, we're going to have to kind of work with the city as far as what you'll let us plant in there, but, you know, Bella Fontana, I'm assuming is somewhat Italian maybe?
Italian, yeah.
I don't know, I'm, heck, I live in Dennison, I don't know nothing about Italy. Uh, but we wanted to use some different plant materials, maybe some taller, some taller, uh, the pencil type trees and stuff that, that are more common in Mediterranean areas. That's what we want to try to use across the front-
To break up the walls.
...in the way of landscaping. And that'll help to break up the wall. Of course, the sign's going to help do that. I think the main wall that's going to be the point of contention is the wall that's going down Fannin. And if it, someday she could get a mural painted on it, that would pretty much resolve that issue, but.
Discussion in council?
You're speaking my language with public art, so don't worry on that end.
It's so important.
We can find something, we can-
It's so important.
Set up a meeting with Ms. Dow and she's always excited to work with me on some murals, so we can, we can work on that end.
It absolutely brings people to our community.
So, of these, if we did this color palette-
Yes.
But did the Golden Spell yellow, that is the one you want, correct? That would be good. I mean, I prefer this to the, to the Egyptian blue. I think, I really like that darker trim. If, if you think this would work for you.
And I would say keep in mind that this is a very bright blue in this picture, but it, but if you look at the swatch color of this splendid blue, it's not this bright. It, it's, can you go to, it, it's actually a lot more muted-
Yeah.
-than what you're seeing in that graphic design. But again, computer colors versus real colors are, are very different. But it is a much more muted, uh, blue. It's not so Fiesta Blue, so to say.
But correct me if I'm wrong, the Golden Spell is not on our approved list, correct?
That's, that's correct.
So, I don't want to get into a situation where we're approving something that's not on the list.
Well, but I-
I mean, I'm okay with a Sunday brunch or brooch or whatever, however you pronounce it. Is that on the list?
Applicants have always had the right to request colors that aren't on the list if they want to. It just has to have that approval. It has to be noted that it wasn't.
It just has to be approved.
It's, it's just like-
And usually it pertains to corporate signage.
Right.
She, she has already, it is already being used on her, on her, her location on Main Street. So, it has been approved before.
Right. It, an example would be the Hey Sugar sign that just got hung on the front of my current building. Those colors are not on the approved list at all, but they were their branding and their logo. So, my understanding was is it got approved because they didn't want to change their logo. And so, but they're not necessarily on the, well, they're not at all.
And they presented all of those colors saying they weren't approved.
Yes, yes, yes.
Prior to, uh, taking action, uh, Councilmember Crowley needs to recuse himself and leave the dais.
Mayor, I think Amber Holly is in on this one.
He might be alone too.
Okay.
Are you good with me?
You good with both of us?
Uh, I'm through with both of you, but Amber. Okay, Amber, would you, will you state your name and address for the record, please, ma'am?
Hi. I'm Amber Holly at 3348 West Stafford in Dennison. Um, I wanted to come, I had, I saw this picture floating around and I wanted to kind of just be a voice from the general public, I guess. Um, I understand people's kind of natural draw to bright colors and the neat thing about bright colors is that they evoke emotions. The tricky thing is they evoke indifferent emotions in different people. So, what one person might be really drawn to and find joy in, other people might find very offensive or difficult to palette and swallow. Um, my concerns were just that we have this massive development plan going on in downtown, this D3 project. We're working to create kind of this cohesive, almost like a historical with some luxury vibe throughout that downtown with a lot of like natural colors, natural elements, um, neutral backdrops, basically. And like we were discussing with the beautiful art throughout downtown, I think that's super special, but I love that the majority of our downtown creates the backdrop for special pieces like that. I think a really cool water-themed, um, you know, artwork piece on the side of that building would, mural would be really cool. Um, but I feel like a really bright blue building would take away from the, the wow factor of a big mural, maybe. Um, for me, I just feel like when we're working as a community to kind of create a cohesive destination downtown, um, sometimes use of color like this, um, is kind of counterproductive, maybe. Um, there are communities that as a whole have like come together and fully embraced the idea of color, like Palm Springs or Havana or whatever, right? There's like places where that's their, that's their vibe, that's what they're creating as a community, but I just don't feel like that's downtown Dennison. And, um, when I look at like the photos and the plan for this revitalization that's happening, my worry is that this is going to feel like it's in opposition to that. So, those are my concerns. Thanks.
Thank you. Discussion-
Mayor, can I say something?
You can.
Thank you.
Ms. Nobler?
Uh, Don Nobler, still live at number one Downs Lake Circle, Dallas, Texas, 75230. And, uh, I don't have a dog in this fight and Charlie seems like a heck of a nice guy, but I like the picture. And we've got, what, seven or eight buildings right there? And I love Cindy's, uh, picture, the one that was over here. That, I, I think it looks great. I really do. Who am I? Nobody. That's my choice.
Okay. Thank you. Discussion from council.
It's tough at this point. You can't, you can't legislate preference at this point. These are all approved colors and they may be bright, um, and maybe not what I would necessarily choose. Uh, I let my wife choose the colors, just so you know. So, that's in the record. Um, but they are on our, our list and I, I think Ms. Jordan's really trying to compromise with us. I, I, I mean, the, the alternative is, is what, to deny it and then we delay her further is my fear. And then we, we've delayed a business from being able to open.
Well, I don't think an approved color of, in and of itself is a reason to approve a color. I think that the color has to be appropriate for the building. Um, I don't, you know, I don't want Amy to paint her building and then, and she goes, "Oh, my word, what have I done?" So, um, I, I think this is certainly, um, a better alternative than the first one. Mr. Spiegel, Councilmember Spiegel?
Uh, I, I mean, I've said my piece. I, I get it, but at the same time, I, I think that, you know, just like we did with the valuable old time and the train facility, uh, in order for me to be comfortable, I'm going to have to be in the neutral palette for the building wall colors. And that would be my direction that I hope staff heads for any future applications. I'm just one opinion.
Any further discussion?
Do, is it important to you that all sides of your building are that blue? What if we did the front, which could be broken up with a little bit of landscaping and the signage, the blue, and then the, the other side and back, the, a different color or something? I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there.
Do you want me to step in? Please. We need, we need it reported. Thank you, Amy.
Um, I would prefer not to paint multiple colors. I, Charlie and I originally talked about doing all these, the multiple colors on the downspouts would be this color and the, on the other side where the drive-through is, is turning into a patio with a wrought iron fence, which has already been talked about with the other committee, um, to break that wall up. Um, but I really didn't want to have a hodgepodge of a different, of a bunch of different colors. Um, I, I under, I, I hear what you guys are saying, I really do, and just as a citizen of this community, I just want to voice for a second, I guess. I guess my concern would be if we're going to start limiting colors, are we going to ask all the people on Main Street to repaint their buildings? Because there's half that are not earth tones, truly. I mean, truly, they're not earth tones. And how do we know what buildings are allowed to be painted blue versus tone, like tan? Like when I bought this building, no one said to me, "Hey, you can only paint this building earth tones because that was what we think would look best for this building." I was told, "You can buy this building, here's the list of approved colors, pick a color." If somebody would have said, "This building is only approved for earth tones," I wouldn't have bought this building. I would have said, "What buildings are allowed to be?" What, what building should I buy then? I, I understand and I absolutely don't want to upset any community members, but I guess my question would just be is, are we sending letters to everyone else that's on Main Street that has a bright colored building? Because what we're, what, it just seems unfair. I agree with you, we should update the list. I agree with you, take Egyptian blue off. That's fine with me, I, I don't care. Take, take any color off you want, red, blue, green, I don't care. I, I just think that we have to be consistent to encourage business owners to come to Dennison. I, I'll speak freely. I don't like that Hey Sugar sign on my day spa, but that's not my, I didn't make that decision. You see what I'm saying? Um, I, I know people won't like my blue building. I, I hope that people will instead see that I bought an old building that looks pretty rough, sitting on a very important corner that has a new life and a new purpose and, and is excited. and is exciting and it's not ordinary. I think Dennison wants to be unique. I think that's why we're spray painting buildings with graffiti art, I mean, which is beautiful. I think we're, we have our whole center gazebo decorated like crazy and, and fabrics and, and we celebrate in this community, the arts, or Music on Main, uh, all the festivals. We, I, I think that, I agree with you that certain buildings, that you want this historic look and, and maybe, maybe that's the, the way Dennison wants to go. I would say that maybe Dennison is not going in the right direction then. I think your uniqueness is colorful buildings, art, painting dumpsters, celebrating and making Dennison an attraction, something different and not ordinary. So, that's, I'll let you make your decision.
Wait a minute. Wait, wait just a second.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Charlie, will you, Charlie?
Yes.
He's busy. Okay, so, so let me ask you something. Is there, you, you've got a great eye, is there a way to break up the color? For, for example, this, this piece that comes out around the dark iris, what if, what if that were painted this, this pale yellow that's where it says "Fine Wellness"? What if that, to, to break up some of that, that color, um, where, where it just doesn't, I don't know, I'm just, I'm just looking for a way that, that, um-
Well, the problem is that there's not any kind of an architectural element that we could use to break up the wall. It's just a tilt wall, it's just, or, well, I think that's actually a Haydock block building with stucco on it, but there could, you know, possibly be a scenario to where we could maybe leave the, I don't know, this is, we'd have to talk about this, it's, this, this, this is totally up to Amy. I mean, I'm, I'm just, but there would be the possibility of, of maybe we, we, the bottom and we, we measure the height of the wall and we divide it into a proportion where it doesn't, you know, you have to make sure that wherever we put a demising line, that it doesn't make the wall look sloppy. So, we'd have to use proper scale, but possible that we could do the blue, maybe that across the bottom with, uh, and just actually paint a band on the wall and then above that, we go to maybe a lighter shade of, of a blue, that a way she can stay within what she wants in the way of a blue building. The problem that we may run into is, is that when we start doing those kind of things, the budget that we have for, for painting is going to change and we have to make sure that'll fit within, within what she has to, to renovate the building. That's a possibility. Uh, we could maybe do a line that would be just a little bit under the Spa and Wellness thing and maybe that could be a, I don't know, uh, maybe that could be the darker blue trim and then a lighter blue above that or something. I, I mean-
Well, I, I don't, I don't think it's fair for this, this council to, to create a situation where we're, we're impeding their, their ability to stay on budget. I don't, I don't think that.
And I'm not saying that it would, Mayor, I'm just saying that I would have to run the numbers with the painter and see what he could do and how much he would charge us to do that. Cause obviously, you know, it, it's gonna take some time because that stripe's gotta go a long ways down that wall, so you gotta make sure it's straight and it's, so it's, it's gonna be a little bit tricky, but it's doable.
So, I, the, the issue, I'm, I'm filing the front. The issue I have is that long wall on that. What if you were to put a similar sign to the front on that side to break it up to where you don't have a long blue wall?
That's the wall we'd like to put a mural on. Um, I just-
I understand, but that's down the road somewhere.
Well, I mean, I, yes, financially it is.
Thing about it is, a sign, even with additional sign, you're still asking for more money.
Yeah, that sign right there is not cheap.
So, that, seriously, if we look at doing that, the, the sign would probably be more expensive than commissioning somebody to paint a mural. And if we, if we got lucky and there was any money left in the end of the budget, I think that we've talked about doing that, but it's, you know.
Okay.
Mayor, Mr. Hunter knows where there's some art money left.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you, Charlie.
Okay.
Um, I, I think we need to, to move forward with the motion, so, um, I, you know, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna say, um, Amy has been willing to compromise, um, whether, whether this, we, we have to take personal preference out of it and we, we do have to move forward with removing those colors that we do not want to see in our community and so, so I think we need to, we need to move forward. Amy deserves an answer, so.
Okay. Mayor, I move to approve the use of the proposed color scheme on the facade of 430 West Chestnut Street to include Splendid Blue for use as the primary facade color, Dark Iris on the metal trim and roof screening, Sea Serenade to be utilized on the wall sign logo, Golden Spell to be utilized at the sign lettering, and Veranda Ivory to be utilized as the sign accent.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Hander and a second by Councilmember Doty. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
The motion carries. Item 6G, receive a report, hold a discussion and take action on a request to repaint the facade at 318 West Main Street, case number 2021-063H. Mr. Medina?
Thank you. Here's the subject property on West Main Street, just a couple door down, a couple doors down from us. Here's the front of the building, this is the book rack, uh, at the, at the, see, sorry, give me one second. The October, on the October 9th Historic Preservation Board meeting, the Historic Preservation Board, uh, approved the removal of this white facade, this kind of false facade on the front, so that will be coming off and the applicant will be submitting a full, like, front facade plan to be acted upon at a future date by the Historic Preservation Board. Tonight, the applicant's requesting to utilize the same color that is on the building today or one that closely matches it. There is a correction in your staff report, I got an email from the applicant, um, just a few hours ago. Uh, his original letter of intent was requesting to utilize this color on the entire building, uh, but his email that I received today states that he only wanted to paint the front facade. So, after the new facade goes in and the new windows are approved and, and all that is settled, the applicant just wants to go ahead and paint the color what's existing today, or, sorry, a, a close match. That is, uh, Lofonda Wild West Green, also known as Cool Moss is the updated name.
So, are you saying that this correction, um, they're gonna paint the windows the same color?
No, ma'am, only the front facade.
Okay. Well, so, so there are gonna be windows exposed and so there will be a, a, a color scheme, um, to paint their trim and et cetera. Should they not come back to us when they have determined that, what colors they want to paint the windows? Um, be, I mean, they're gonna have to, if they want to paint the windows a different color, they're gonna have to come back. So, it makes sense to me that we just go ahead and table it until they have their, their design and then... I mean, we can, we can approve the color, but, uh, but they can't proceed with painting the windows until they come back for approval.
Yes, ma'am. Um, if this color here is approved, I can make that very clear in our letter to the applicant when he gets a certificate of appropriateness, that this is the only color that's approved on the building. Any other deviations, additions, changes, have to come back before this body for further approval.
Okay. So, what's, what, what's easier?
I think we're going ahead and approve it so that they can make the changes they need to make.
Discussion from council? Let the record show that Councilmember Crowley returned to the dais, I didn't notice that he came back. I'm sorry, Ma'am.
I know, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right. Is that a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the repainting of the facade at 318 West Main with 6006-4A Lofonda Wild West Green.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Hander and a second by Councilmember Doty.
Mayor, could we get a clarification on that real quick?
Front facade?
Well, is, by facade, do you, you don't mean trim or other things? Like, it's not clear whether everything can be painted this one color or just a certain, the color's just being approved for a certain element?
Of the body of the facade? The main part of the facade?
Maybe that which, that which matches this, this color? Technical term. Or that it's approved-
Excluding, excluding any trim that, that may need to be painted a different color.
Yeah.
Okay. That's my motion. Excuse me.
I'll second that too.
There is a convoluted motion by Mayor Pro Tim Hander and a second by Councilmember Doty. All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose, same sign. Okay. Item 6A, receive a report, hold a discussion and take action on a request to repaint the facade and trim of the structure located at 531 West Crawford Street, case number 2021-059H. Mr. Medina?
Thank you. Here's the subject property at the intersection of Myrick and West Crawford, outlined in yellow. And the subject property was painted, let's see, oh, sorry, I'm on the wrong staff report. Give me one second. Here we go. The subject property has been previously painted with Pulitzer Blue and Noir, that's the, uh, black trim, you can kind of see that here. City staff met with the applicant recently and the applicant is now proposing to utilize Ocean Storm instead of the Pulitzer Blue. They would still like to keep utilizing the Noir trim and here are the colors on screen Also received information, received information that the applicant was open to utilizing Mark Twain Ombra Gray, her updated color name is Gray Suit, and it's my understanding that the applicant is also here tonight.
Mr. Nobler?
Yes, ma'am.
Will you state your name and address for the record, please, sir?
I still haven't.
I know you haven't.
Don Nobler, number one Downs Lake Circle, Dallas, Texas, 75230. Madam Mary, Mayor, and distinguished members of this esteemed council and City Manager Smith, the reason I am here is because I have felt, and Tommy has felt, that we have made a grave and gross error, that we got this piece of paper from Brother Medina and so we thought, "Okay, we can paint it." So, we started, we had our painter paint it. I don't know if he did it on a weekend or at midnight, but he did it and when y'all notified us to stop, the baby was already in the water.
Yes, it was.
So, there wasn't a whole lot we could do, so we decided we would come en masse, both of us, the entire consistency of, uh, Los Hermanos Realty and say, "Hey, we're sorry." And we'd like to repaint it and, you know, we'll, it'll be twice the money, maybe a little bit more, but we wanted to go with the darker gray so we don't have to paint it two more times and the trim will be, uh, the dark gray and, you know, I'm, I'm all, "Thank you." You know, we'll go ahead and do it, it's gonna cost us a lot of money, but we love Dennison and we want to make Dennison grow and we want to bring in more business, more commerce. That's what we're all about. We're not here just to buy buildings and have them empty. So, we like that, we think it'll attract people and so that is our request.
Do you not think that's gonna make your building really dark?
Uh, you know, I've always been told, "It's not what's on the outside, but what is on the inside." And what's gonna be on the inside is gonna be so nice. So, no, ma'am, I don't. I own, I own, I don't know how, 50 buildings and apartment complexes in Dallas and that is my gray. And whenever you see a gray building, say, "Hmm, Don Nobler probably owns it." And so, that's my, my deal.
Well, what about your, that you would reluctantly paint the other color?
Okay, uh, Bill, the other color?
There we go.
See, that's light and that's gonna take us two coats.
It's two coats?
Two coat, it'll take us two coats to cover that blue. It's a booger, but we can do it. We just have to be positive. Let's go with the darker gray and say, "Did we lose Brother Spiegel? I hope we didn't offend him, did we?"
No, he, he, uh, he had something.
Okay, maybe he's on diuretics, who knows?
Well, I, I mean, I'm, it, it just looks to me like that the other gray is gonna be really, really dark with that black trim. It's gonna make your building really dark, but it will certainly be a better alternative than that blue.
If you say so, Mayor. Listen, I'd like to take this opportunity to really thank Donna Dow. Donna, oh, she's out there, but Donna has been so helpful and so wonderful and she works with us all the time and I know we're a pain in the neck, but she's so gracious and Mayor God, you've been wonderful to us as well. We don't know the other people. Bill Medina, I can, I'll tell you, he, uh, he bless his heart, he's doing his job and it's about to kill us, but, uh, if that's his job, it's his job. I don't have anything else to say. You want to hear anything else?
No, let's, let's, don't get personal here.
Okay.
Okay. All right, well, I'm the only one talking, so I'm sure this council has an opinion.
Mr. Medina, whenever you, um, when it was approved by Historic Preservation but still had not come to council, was it communicated to the applicants not to paint their building?
Yes, sir, I sent an email to him on the 6th stating that Historic Preservation Board had recommended approval and that this body would be taking final action and I encouraged him to come to this meeting. So, yes.
Is this the first time we've had this problem with these property owners?
Um...
This type of issue?
Uh, we see this type of problem throughout our Main Street Historic District consistently. This particular property owner, um, not included in that statement, just in general, we see that everywhere.
Our issue here tonight is what color we're gonna paint the building. So, let's get back to the color we're gonna paint the building.
Well, the building shouldn't have been painted yet, though.
Well, it shouldn't, but it is, but they're willing to, to be here to repaint it, so...
I would suggest the Mark Twain gray.
Go back to hell, please, Bill.
Yes, sir.
Steve, we can't put the, the Mark Twain and the Ocean Storm together, can you?
Uh, not at this point right now, sorry.
I just see him, I just hate to see him have to paint the building two times, or...
Could've just been one coat.
Well, the decision not gonna make itself, so is there, is there a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the use of Ocean Storm on the building facade in Noir 4009-2 on the trim and accents at 531 West Crawford Street, subject to the finishes being matte and semi-gloss.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There is a motion by Councilmember Doty and a second by Councilmember Crowley. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries. Pursuant to Chapter 551 Texas Government Code, the council reserves the right to convene an executive session from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting to receive legal advice from its attorney on any posted agenda item as permitted by law or to discuss the following: Consult with attorneys on a matter in which the attorney is due to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct; conflicts with this chapter and/or consult with attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or contemplated settlement of the same. Section 551.071. Confer with city attorney on substandard building; confer with city attorney regarding provisions of city services; confer with city attorney regarding complaint of Jonathan Earnhardt under Public Utility Commission, docket number 52749. The time is 7:50 and we are now in executive session.